I tried putting drops of oil in the sauce, which they shoot out, doesn't give work. And Andy suggested putting, um, I-
Uh, the, um, are we on? We're on. The witching hour has come and we welcome all who are in attendance and we do have a couple of guests, three. And we, um, they are cherished here. This is the regular meeting, adjourned regular meeting of the Laguna Woods City Council, January thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. It is now two oh one. This meeting will be zoomed as well, Chris, and, uh, we are being zoomed also. And if anyone in the audience is listening by Zoom, we, um, uh, will invite any comments you wish to make to contact, um-
Public comments are actually available in person or, um, by writing, but not by Zoom.
Okay. Very good. The, uh, meeting is now called to order. We'll ask Cynthia to give a pledge allegiance right after we've called a roll to see who's in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Connors.
Yeah.
Councilmember McCary.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
President.
Mayor Protem Horn.
Here.
Mayor Hatch.
Sure. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no, um, there are no presentations or ceremonial matters. Uh, we now have, um, an opportunity for the public, uh, to speak to us if they wish. They'll come to the microphone here and, um, you're asked to limit your remarks to three minutes, if you can, on any item that is not on the agenda. That means you can talk about anything for three minutes as long as it isn't on the agenda. Do we have any requests for, uh, uh, nothing from the internet, correct? All right. We have one request here from Herman Jansen. Uh, Mr. Jansen, if you'll come up and, um-
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'd like to thank you for the hard work I've received, Capitol fix, in the form of-
Yes.
I'm here by myself today after scouting for locations. But just wanted to let council and staff, city staff, know-
That we are actively pursuing, uh, to submit an application and we are looking for, uh, an appropriate location that is, could be approved by the city. So that's really all I have to say today. If the city has any guidance for us regarding finding a location, uh, that would be greatly appreciated. So I've contacted all people that have something to offer, but, uh, it's been difficult. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming back and we do remember your visit of last, uh-
I'm sorry?
I say we remember your visit from the last meeting, the two of you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And I, uh, appreciate this chamber in particular. I've been to multiple city council meetings. This one has been particularly pleasant. So, thank you.
We'd like to keep it that way.
And, uh-
You won't, you won't find many cities with neater people than we have right here.
Thank you very much and I will keep everybody updated on our efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Comment.
Comment, Cynthia.
At the time the council was considering the regulations and guidelines, there was a presentation by the city manager regarding- regarding the setbacks and the, the three hundred or six hundred feet limitations and so forth. And it seemed to me that that indicated that there were several possible locations to cite a business such as this. Is that presentation available as PowerPoint on our website, anywhere?
It's actually, yeah, it is on the website, but, um, right before this meeting, Mr. Jansen talked to me about it. I emailed him over the information, so he's got that.
All right. Anything else? We'll move on to, um, item six, city treasurer's report. We had one last time, but, uh, none on that particular item, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. We now come to the consent calendar. Once again, we have none. Remember, this is an adjourned meeting that we're having, which is one of the reasons. So we'll move on to, uh, public hearings.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
There, there's nothing on the consent calendar.
Nothing to move on. Okay. All right. The public hearings, there are none, and city council business, well, these are to consider for a second reading for two items, I believe, two or three, let's see.
Yes.
Two. Chris, would you re-
Sure, we have-
View the nine point one for us.
Yes. We have four items on the council business agenda today. The first two, as the mayor mentioned, are second readings of ordinances that were introduced and approved for their first reading after a public hearing at the meeting on January seventeenth. The first pertains to sidewalk vending regulations. Um, there was a full presentation at the last meeting, but this is an item that's identified on the city's current two-year budget and work plan. Um, it is in response to changes in state law that were made under California Senate Bill nine forty-six, which, um, big picture requires cities to allow sidewalk vending on public sidewalks and pedestrian paths of travel. As I mentioned last time, this item has nothing to do with private property. Uh, this is specific to public sidewalks, public pedestrian paths of travel. Um, next steps, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, assuming that the city council takes the staff recommendation today and approves the second reading and adopts the ordinance, we do anticipate coming back to you with a second ordinance to flesh out some more of the regulatory approach. And, uh, there is an annual application fee that's called for in the regulations that we are working on calculating as well. So those will come back to council, um, probably in March or thereabouts, uh, would be my guess, subject to change, but tentatively at least. The staff recommendation today, uh, is to approve second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived, titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, adding chapter six point four four to Title Six, Businesses of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, to regulate sidewalk vendors in compliance with California Government Code Section five one zero three eight, including but not limited to, by establishing restrictions and requirements directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns, as well as by establishing a prohibition on stationary sidewalk vendors in areas that are zoned exclusively residential and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have today. There's also an opportunity for public comments and then consideration of council action.
All right. Are there any public comments? None? Uh, now, council.
I was just wondering if you had had time to talk about our golf cart paths with any of the electeds?
I haven't yet, um, but we do plan to address some of those accessibility concerns in that second ordinance that'll follow in the next couple of months, and I will be having those conversations as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Cynthia, did you have a comment? Did you make a motion?
I moved, I moved your recommendation.
I did have a comment.
Okay.
I, I think the, this ordinance is actually in support of existing federal, state, and county regulations.
No, you're fine.
Yeah. Sorry about that. This ordinance is in support of already existing federal, state, and county regulations, but obviously this, the federal government does not perform the duty of, of, uh, examining and neither does the state, so it's left to the county. The county role is to inspect, and the following is from their website of the Orange County Healthcare Agency. They inspect restaurants, markets, bakeries, bars, school cafeterias, even certified market, farmers' markets to ensure food is safe, facilities are clean, and foods are advertised and labeled accurately incorrectly. Inspection reports are even available on their website. In addition, they inspect temporary food facilities such as fairs and festivals. That also includes food stored, sold, and served from food vehicles produced under- the food is produced under safe and sanitary conditions and comes from approved sources. Lunch or catering trucks, trailers, prepackaged grocery trucks, produce trucks, ice cream trucks, and carts that offer food such as prepackaged ice cream, coffee, and hot dogs. Vehicle inspections are conducted regularly to ensure that food is safe, facilities are clean, and that good food handling practices are followed. Um, they even maintain a list on the website of establishments that have been closed down, when they were closed down, and the reason. And some of those reasons are insufficient hot water and, which is a hundred degrees Fahrenheit, or greater water for adequate, uh, or greater, and water for adequate hand and washing as well as operable restrooms. I've delivered meals on wheels for close to nineteen years, and over that time, we've regularly received documentation from the county regarding food safety, washing our hands. And it's not unusual for people, a client, to have a doctor's appointment and they want their meals left at the door. Wait, that's, we cannot do that. The food has to be taken in, the food has to go into the refrigerator. So this is, to oppose this would be to oppose existing state, federal, and county regulations. So all we're doing is, is supporting that because the county obviously can't, uh, examine a, a pop-up stand if they don't know one exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want a second?
I will.
Oh, now, do you all remember, you're probably too young to remember the, uh, the humor crops- Are we gonna get a light on these?
We are gonna get a light. You can just leave yours on if you would like.
All right, okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? I hear, I hear two ayes. Three ayes, four ayes?
I'm voting nay because the obscenity merchants are not listed in there, and I don't want anyone in this city to think that I had anything to do with permitting that. Thank you.
All right. Now, the vote is four ayes, one nay.
Okay.
All right, now, nine point two.
This is the second, second reading of the day. This is related to street racing and excessive vehicle noise regulations. Again, there was a full presentation plus a, uh, public hearing at the meeting on January seventeenth. At that meeting, the council approved the introduction and first reading of the ordinance included in the agenda packet. Just wanted to mention again that this ordinance has the sheriff's department's support that provides another tool for them to, uh, take enforcement action against, uh, street racing and, uh, noise generated by vehicles on public streets. Um, doesn't take away any of their existing abilities under the California Vehicle Code to also, or in lieu of this, use, uh, state law as an enforcement tool. Um, but again, nonetheless, gives them another tool in their, uh, bag of, uh, options for, um, dangerous behavior or annoying or frustrating behavior. Uh, our recommendation today is that the city council approve the second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived, titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, amending chapter eight point zero six of Title Eight, Traffic Control of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, related to vehicle, golf cart, low-speed vehicle, and motorcycle racing and noise, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. There's another opportunity today for any council questions or public comments, um, and then consideration of council action.
All right, let's see if there are any public comments. Have any been received? None, none here in this room. Um, any comments from council members? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve this second reading.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we come to a new item, item number nine point three.
Okay. Um, give me just a moment. I'm gonna bring some other people into the Zoom feed so they can participate in a little bit. Um, item three on the, or nine point three on the agenda has to do with the California Employers Pension Prefunding Trust Fund. Let me try to... So, um, briefly for background, uh, city employees who are eligible receive retirement benefits through an organization more commonly referred to as CALPERS, but the California Public Employees Retirement System. The, uh, city has done a lot over the years to manage its, uh, retirement liabilities. Many cities, and I know we've talked about this before, but many cities and other government agencies have very, very significant unfunded pension liabilities. Uh, the city of Laguna Woods is in a very strong position of having taken pretty aggressive action under the council's direction for years now to pay down that unfunded liability. So since May of twenty seventeen, the city council has made in excess of a million dollars in lump sum payments, uh, intended to bring that unfunded liability down. Um, there was a period of time, uh, since twenty seventeen and now that no lump sum payments were actually required because the city got too fully funded, and then CALPERS investment performance was such that, uh, we continued to be funded without the need for lump sum payments for several years. There's also an existing city council policy of maintaining an at least eighty percent funded level in practice. Um, I believe pretty much since that policy was put in place, the council has pursued that hundred percent funding level, uh, instead. In twenty twenty-one, we came before you and made a recommendation that the city participate in something known as the California Employers Pension Prefunding Trust, or SEPT. Um, SEPT is akin to the other Internal Revenue Code, Section one fifteen, trust fund that the city's maintained for a number of years to pre-fund retiree li- or retiree medical liabilities. This is a trust that money can be put into specifically to offset the city's pension liability, whether that's unfunded future pension liability or current year, uh, employer contributions for pension liability. Since twenty twenty-one, there have been no contributions made to that trust. So we're set up in SEPT. We have the agreements in place to do it, but we've yet to, uh, make a contribution to it, primarily due to our focus on making lump sum payments to fully fund the, uh, retiree, uh, or retirement liability. What we're recommending today is that the city consider, uh, making a contribution to SEPT in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. That, um, total didn't just totally come out of the sky. That is twenty-five percent of last fiscal year's revenue over expenditures. So that's twenty-five percent of the money that the city put in the bank at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um, the hundred and sixty-three, five fifty-five would be drawn from the city's unassigned general fund balance, which currently totals about six million dollars. That number will go up somewhat as we get into the spring and we receive additional property tax, uh, revenue. But, um, certainly there is room within that six million to consider the, the hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar contribution. From staff's perspective, we're looking at this as a first step in what we would expect would become probably an annual exercise in building the principle within that trust fund such that, um, we're able to generate increased interest revenue off of it and eventually use that interest revenue to either make in part or in total those lump sum contributions that we're currently pulling out of the general fund. So the long-term idea here is to put money in the trust fund, allow it to accumulate, allow the interest earnings on that to continue to increase, and then shift at some point from using at least as much general fund money as we are right now to pay the unfunded pension liability lump sum payments and instead pull the money out of this trust fund. Um, we are still having some conversations internally about what schedule makes sense to do that, but, uh, with last year's audit completed, we thought a logical way to start this would be to put an amount of money in that was money that we didn't expect to receive, right? So this is revenue that we had in excess at the end of last year. It'll give us some time to evaluate the performance of the fund, the management of the fund, and then, um, either next October, November, when we come to you to talk about lump sum payments, if they're necessary, or, um, after the next, or the current fiscal year's audit is complete, which would be, um, probably November of, of next year, we would anticipate coming to you with, uh, another recommendation for a future contribution, and at that point, probably get on to a regular cycle for contributions. The SEPT, uh, fund itself has two different investment options. Um, there are two, uh, investment strategies, one referred to as Strategy One, one referred to as Strategy Two, that, uh, local agencies can choose to invest in. Strategy One is the one that has the higher expected rate of return, but also a higher, uh, return volatility. Strategy Two is the more conservative of the two options. Uh, our recommendation today is to contribute the hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars to Strategy One with the higher expected rate of return, but also return vol- volatility. We are in a strong position financially. Um, we have the opportunity to invest some of this money, see how it, uh, see how the fund performs, but right now, it makes sense to us to put it in the one that has the bigger potential bang for our buck. If we were in a less strong financial position, we might lean towards Strategy Two, but, um, I think a hundred and sixty-three thousand gives us an opportunity to see how Strategy One works. Uh, the investments in both Strategy One and Strategy Two are spread across, uh, four different, um, classes of public assets. Uh, there's information in, um, your agenda packet related to each of the strategies, uh, that PERS produces. But generally speaking, they invest in varying amounts between Strategy One and Strategy Two, in global equity, in fixed income, in treasury inflation-protected securities, and in real estate investment trusts. Um, we have a representative from CALPERS with us today, Darren Lethrop, who I'll invite to speak in just a moment, uh, who can share a little bit more about the SEPT's, uh, investment practices and some of the competitive advantages for using it. I do want to note before I turn it over to Darren, though, that, uh, one thing to be mindful of is that once you contribute funds to a Section one fifteen trust fund, you can only pull that money out for eligible pension-related costs. So you can't invest the money in SEPT and then decide you want to use it to build a new road. Um, you're able to pull it out for either those lump sum payments that we've been making, uh, towards our unfunded pension liability, or for the, uh, annual employer contributions towards, uh, pension expenses. We don't have any fear at the staff level that putting a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in out of a six million dollar unassigned general fund balance is gonna create any complication there, but I wanted to be, to make sure you are aware of that. Um, I see two hands. Let me get those. And then, um, Darren, I'm gonna ask you to just maybe make some brief remarks on SEPT in general and, uh, the differences maybe between Strategy One and, and Two, and how other agencies are, are leveraging SEPT. Um, but I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Yes, I think this is a wonderful idea. I'm just curious whether, um, it, profits off in capital sales or dividends are always reinvested into that fund? And if we get up to a certain level, would we find that maybe, you know, cut, putting the dividends somewhere else if we're getting way too high in there, if that's been looked at?
So that, yeah, the dividends are reinvested in SEPT, so the trust fund's, uh, interest earnings accrue to the trust fund. Um, we, I think realistically, given that since May of twenty seventeen, you've paid over a million dollars to, um, CALPERS in lump sum payments, I think it's probably unlikely that if you're starting with a hundred and sixty-three thousand, you're gonna get to a point anytime in the near future where you're gonna have too much money in there. But I think as we get to the, yeah, it is, it is a nice thought, but, um, but I think as we get to the second year contribution, if you approve the hundred and sixty-three, five fifty-five today, as we get into making a recommendation for whatever the next contribution looks like, part of what we're gonna be looking at is SEPT's performance from this point, from the initial contribution to that point, um, but also the city's general financial posture. So we wouldn't, I, I think that when you start to accumulate more in SEPT, our recommendation would likely be that you start to pull from it and reduce the balance that way. I don't, I can't imagine putting enough in it and allowing it to accumulate enough interest that we wouldn't at some point decide, hey, we wanna pull that and pay from the trust fund instead of the general fund. Um, but it's something that we would watch as we move forward. And Councilmember McCary?
Thank you. Uh, great report. My, I think you answered one of my questions. It's a two-part. So is there a penalty for withdrawing a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred? Uh, will, will, is there a fee associated with that?
We would pull the hundred and sixty-three thousand, five fifty-five, um, out of either LAIF or OSIP, um, most likely. Both of those, there's no penalty for withdrawing money. Um, we may actually have the hundred and sixty-three thousand already in a checking account or somewhere that we can make the payment from, but, uh, no, you wouldn't be paying any penalty for pulling that and making the contribution.
And then that would be the same for the SEPT? Cause you mentioned maybe at some point taking some of that money out. Was there a penalty associated with that?
Yeah, there's no penalty associated with taking money out of SEPT. It's only limited by the nature of the use, right? So you can't pull it out to use it to, I don't know, remodel something or, or build a road. But, um, yeah, it's, it's intended, the trust is intended to be something that accumulates money for a period of time, but then cities do pull from it. Some cities, I think, pull from it more regularly, certainly than we would be looking at doing. Okay. So Darren, I'm gonna, um, turn it over to you. If you go ahead and unmute, you should be able to, uh, make a couple of comments here. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Uh, everyone can hear me okay?
Yeah.
I just wanna thank the city council for allowing me to be here today. Um, you know, just a couple of comments, uh, regarding the trust. Uh, one of, I think would be a good point to point out, uh, just based on the comments about looking at a year-to-year performance. Uh, there is a ten-year time horizon expectation with these trusts. Uh, they do, uh, fundamentally work based on, uh, the, the principles of time and compounding interest. And so especially with volatility that we've seen in the last couple of years, um, maybe a bit of an unfair performance, but we do have our fund fact sheets that we, uh, report monthly that will show, uh, long-term, uh, growth on these strategies. Um, with that said, um, kind of just to address some of the other commentary regarding, um, uh, dispersments from these trusts, uh, as was previously stated, these are Section one fifteen. It's an IRC code, Section one fifteen trust. And so assets that go into this trust are specifically meant to help fund pension-related expenses. Um, if there was per se a situation where, um, you know, you may perhaps not need the funds at that particular time, um, but you could use funds for other, uh, you know, non-pension-related expenses, dispersments still can come back to the city for the expenses occurred that year. Um, what we do is we send a check back to the city, with the check and put, check and go in the general fund, and then of course essentially be used for whatever the city might need that money for. So there are some limitations and caps on those, but again, overall, based on the initial contribution of a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, it would be pretty readily available for the city in the next- contribution of $163,000, it would be pretty readily available for the city in the next upcoming couple of years. So wouldn't be any stranded assets, I don't think, at that dollar figure.
Darren, can you also maybe talk about how other cities have seen success using SEP? We're obviously talking about making an initial contribution to it, but I know there are many cities that have been more actively engaged in SEP like we have been in the SERPT program, but can you just maybe make some comments around that?
Yeah, funding policies tend to differ from public agencies. I don't know that there's overwhelmingly any particular policy that we're seeing more common than others, but right now, majority of contributing agencies are looking to build an investment base with this, so we're seeing more contributions than dispersments at this time, again, while they build that asset base. We were also seeing, and the City of Laguna Woods has actually signed up for concurrent enrollment, so another really unique way that this trust can be used for pension pre-funding is that you can contribute in both strategies simultaneously. So if it got to a point where, you know, you felt very comfortable with the assets that were, or the investment returns that you're seeing in Strategy 1, you still have the opportunity to make contributions to Strategy 2 to kind of preserve assets going forward. You know, the main goal of these trusts is really to be an investment vehicle to help make pension more affordable for agencies in the future. It has been expensive, there've been a lot of changes, you know, referred to like, have run in the last 13 years, or should say about, yeah, 11 years. So it's just a way to make this way more affordable for agencies in the state of California.
And then my last question for you, one, or not really a question, but you can comment on it. One of the things that is attractive to staff for this particular program is the low administrative cost charged by PERS on top of it. You want to touch on that briefly?
Absolutely. So CalPERS isn't the only Section 115 administrator for pension pre-funding. We are the only not-for-profit that's in the space. And so we have a very, very simple structure, fee rate that we charge agencies. That fee rate is not scalable, it is the same fee rate charged to all participating agencies. So regardless of contributions, the same low fee rate is applied to every participating agency. Right now, it's again, just enough to run the trust, again, to pay for all administrative custodial services to operate the trust. And so, you know, like my team here, we are here solely to support this, but again, it's very low cost of 25 basis points that is charged annually to contributions. So terminations, there's, you know, if, if, you know, agencies decide to go to another administrator or terminate due to not offering the benefit, again, there's, there's no hidden, you know, type cost with this trust. It really is based on contributions within the trust only, and so any assistance that we would provide you would be all-inclusive. So very, very simple, simple process and fee rate.
Yeah, and we've been very, our experience with Section 115 trusts up to this point has been with the retiree medical trust, but that's also managed and administered by CalPERS, and we've had very good, a good track record with it. It's easy to manage, and like Darren said, it's a low number of basis points for the admin work that CalPERS staff put into it. So with that, I, let me read through the recommendations and then we'll go to some questions. But staff's recommendation today would be to approve a contribution of $163,555 to the California Employers Pension Pre-Funding Trust Fund SEP for investment in the SEP Strategy 1 portfolio and authorize the city manager and administrative services director, city treasurer, to cause such contribution to be made and to execute agreements, documents, and certifications necessary to do so, and to adopt a resolution titled "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24 Commencing July 1, 2023 and Ending June 30, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25 Commencing July 1, 2024 and Ending June 30, 2025, Related to a Contribution to the California Employers Pension Pre-Funding Trust SEP and Making Related Authorizations." There's an opportunity for public comments and council questions.
I believe we've asked for public comments. Have you heard anything from the, no, nothing in the public? Let's start over here. Carol, do you have any questions?
I think Chris, you have to take credit for, first off, for even starting this program so that we start paying, because that, that was a really forward step. And then the 25% is our, so to say, the profit, I don't know how else to state it.
Yeah, right.
How did you come up with that number?
You know, we, we wanted to start somewhere that seemed reasonable, so we knew we wanted to base it off of the revenue over expenditures from last fiscal year. But if you look at the contributions that we've made more recently, lump sum contributions, which let me flip to that page real quick, it seemed to be in the ballpark of what we might expect near term, in case there was any poor experience with the trust and we wanted to pull from it in a near-term horizon. The last, the last payment that was made in October was $306,000, but after we made the initial payment in 2017, the following year, when we had a larger payment in 2017, it dropped down to about $137,000. So it, in looking at our previous lump sum payments, it seemed like the kind of thing that putting $163,000 in, if we had a terrible experience and wanted to pull money from it, we'd be able to pull money for eligible purposes sooner rather than later. Our thinking, I think, will change, assuming we have a good experience with it as we move forward, but didn't want to overcommit right at the beginning.
Thank you.
As I see it, we're, we're just taking a small amount of our money out of our invested general funds and putting it into invested specific funds for pension use. And because it's such a tiny part of our overall cash balance, it's appropriate that we invested in something that is a little more volatile and it's, it's a place where we can afford to take a little more risk. So I certainly approve of that. I just want to say a word about pension funds and unfunded liability because it's, it's a place where so many public agencies and union pension plans also can, can run into trouble because it's so dependent on rate of return and interest rate. It's often done with smoke and Confederate money. And if a person, there are all kinds of actuarial calculations, and a person is 40 years old and they're contributing X dollars every month or every year, and they're going to work till they're 65. So there's 25 years' worth of contributions, and there's 25 years' worth of interest income until 65, when the dispersments are made, and then reduced interest income as the pot gets smaller, per person, per agency. And if the agent, if the fund is calculating interest at 7.5%, then they don't have to, then the employees don't have to divert as much of their compensation from income to pension deductions, and the employees are happy and everything looks good. But then when it turns out that the interest rate really is only like 6.34%, or as we've run into sometimes 4% or no percent, then all of a sudden, the anticipated growth of that fund is way, way lower than what you blithely expected it to be, and you have this enormous unfunded liability. So to the extent that we can keep our unfun, that we can keep our liability and our pension obligations fully funded as much as possible from year to year, I think that's really, it's, it's a, an excellent financial principle, and I'm very grateful to Chris and staff for keeping us as much ahead of this curve as we can be. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Darren, what's your projection as to where we're going on returns out there now? Federal government is calling, a number of their outstanding agencies are calling their indebtedness and interest rates are going to drop. Where, where are we going on Strategy 1, do you think?
The 10-year, on the 10-year horizon, it's projected at 4.5%.
5%?
4.5.
Yeah, 4.5.
4.5%. Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, that's both of the recommendations on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you again for allowing me to present.
All right.
9.4.
That's it, isn't it?
Oh, we got 9.4.
All right.
Capital improvements.
Let me turn the page here. All right, 9.4, capital improvement program, Chris.
All right. So we started doing this in October for the first time, but I wanted to walk you through a quarterly update on where we're at with our capital improvement program, and also a little bit of a sense on where we're going, I think, in the future with some capital improvements. So I'll try to move through this as quickly as possible, but I think it's a valuable exercise in just bringing you up to date, particularly given the larger financial impact of some of these capital projects. The capital program we're talking about today is the one that the City Council adopted in June. It includes a total of 12 projects. Some of those are new, some of those are carryovers. We're going to touch on all of them today, and then I'm going to conclude with some comments on, as we look ahead, we update the capital improvement program at least every June. I'm going to give you a little bit of a forecast and the kinds of updates we're anticipating. Right off the bat, the good news is that five of the 12 projects are now complete. Obviously, most notably, the library project opened to the public over the weekend. But we've finished two of the ADA projects. One was a carryover from last year, one was a new project. We've finished our pavement work for the year, the library project, and then the electric vehicle charging infrastructure project. That one's been done for some time, but once the construction fencing came down, we were able to open those ports to the public on December 20th. And we will, as we discussed with the council previously, start to provide some regular information to the council on the use of those charging stations, but we're going to let a little bit of time elapse before we do that, just because we started mid-month and, or really towards the end of the month in December. We have one project under construction right now, that's the median project on El Toro between Town Center and Home Depot. That's also the green construction fence staging area in our parking lot relates to that project as well. The re-landscaping of those two medians that had noticed to proceed was issued on January 18th. We're anticipating the project being complete in about mid-February. There were a couple of rain delays, and we're likely to have additional rain delays in the next couple of days, tis the season, but it was a 30 calendar day construction scheduled to start with, so even if we're adding a couple of days due to rain delays, we're still, I think, feeling pretty good that the contractor will be able to complete it in February. The, one of the trickier projects for us, and you can see just based on the number of times we've bid it out, are the water quality improvements that we're talking about making on El Toro and Molten, related to some work done by the county previously with the Molten Smart Street project. The project as originally conceived includes a modular wetland unit to be constructed on El Toro Road, and then a bioswale to be constructed on Molten Parkway. We went through three rounds of bidding, and last we provided you with an update, we were hopeful that that third round of bidding would bring something wonderful and different. It did not. So we have shifted our thinking internally and have bid out the Molten project, or the Molten portion of this separate. So the bioswale on Molten is a more traditional landscape improvement project. It includes a bioswale, but those are typically constructed by landscape contractors. We are hopeful that that project, when bids come back on February 8th, will be constructible and we'll be able to make a contract award recommendation to you at your next meeting in February on the 21st. The El Toro portion of the work, that modular wetland unit, we're thinking that the combination of the wetland unit itself plus the need to, in order to install the wetland unit, there's some below-ground electrical cabling that needs to be moved, that, that work plus the fact that it's geographically different than the Molten work may have complicated the bidding. So we're now looking at folding the El Toro portion of the work into the Woods End project that we're in design on, which I'll talk about in a little bit. The location of that modular wetland unit is very near the Woods End Wilderness Preserve, so we're thinking we'll try bidding that out with that, but we at least believe that we can construct the bioswale portion sooner rather than later by splitting the, the project. As I mentioned last time, there isn't, we don't believe that there's enough funding currently budgeted for this work, so we do anticipate that when we come back to you with a contract award recommendation, that we'll be recommending using some additional American Rescue Plan Act dollars to backfill whatever the difference is between what we've budgeted and what the construction cost comes back at. The Woods End Wilderness Preserve project, this one is in design. We have been doing some hydrology and hydraulic analysis to look at the site. That work is complete. The engineering analysis came back with a finding that the detention basin that exists in Woods End Wilderness Preserve can likely be repurposed for something else or abandoned entirely, and that it, in addition to not serving a really obvious flood purpose, it also doesn't directly contribute to the runoff of sediment that we experience on El Toro Road. So with that in mind, we moved forward and executed the design agreement with the landscape architect to do the entry improvement conceptual design, and also some of the sediment runoff mitigation that we were able to identify as advantageous. Most of that runoff is coming from lower in the park site with runoff or with sediment that we think can be pretty easily controlled through a combination of retaining wall-like structures. We want to keep the park as natural as possible, so I don't envision us actually constructing retaining walls, but it's very likely that there'll be the strategic placement of some boulders and things to capture some of that, that runoff as it comes down the hill. In addition to executing the design agreement, we also had a pre-design meeting at the project site with city staff and the landscape architect, and then city staff accompanied the landscape architect on a tour of Laguna Coast Wilderness Park with OC Park staff so that they could get a sense of what the rest of the park looks like and the types of plantings that are native to the area, so that we can incorporate as many of those into the entry complex as possible, rather than planting just things that we think look nice. We're trying to pull the look and feel of the park to the street side. So the landscape architect's working on that. We're anticipating conceptual design options for us by the end of February. They'll go through a round of review with city staff, they'll also go through a round of review with OC Park staff, who have expressed a willingness to be involved in the process. And then we'll bring them before the council, get your feedback, incorporate those revisions, and then after the council's at a point where the concept is substantially suitable to your taste and liking, we'll also take it to the Coastal Green Belt Authority for their, their thoughts and comments as well. In addition to that, we've started some of the kind of ancillary discussions that involve the project. On one hand, it's the possibility of rolling in that modular wetland unit, but we also have had a conversation with the El Toro Water District, and I understand the Water District's board may have talked about it at their most recent meeting as well, about locating some joint-use solar-powered surveillance cameras on an existing light pole at the Oso Lift Station that would provide visibility into the entry area at Woods End Wilderness Preserve, but also serve a purpose of providing some surveillance of the lift station itself. So we're exploring that possibility as well. This project, it is partially grant-funded, though the grant funds don't need to be expended until June 30th of 2028, we are trying to move the project along so that we can use American Rescue Plan Act dollars to make up some of the difference before those, those dollars sunset. So we are in a perfect world, we get through the conceptual design this spring, we get into the actual design thereafter, and ideally have a contractor onboard after competitive bidding sometime towards the end of this calendar year, and with construction to follow. into the actual design thereafter, and ideally have a contractor onboard after competitive bidding sometime towards the end of this calendar year and with construction to follow. City Hall refurbishment, Phase Four. This is some cleanup work around City Hall. It's some doors, windows, and balcony railing replacements on the second floor. And then also the replacement and redesign of the heating and cooling system here in the council chambers and in the AV room behind us. That's a failing system that truly is held together with duct tape and paper clips at the moment. That project has been in design. It was actually submitted for building plan review last Friday. We're anticipating comments from building next week. We're anticipating probably at least one round of revisions on that, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to get this project out to bid in March with construction to follow. The parking lot improvement project, this one, we have been working towards, slowed down a little bit as we were wrapping up the City Hall Public Library project, but we are moving full speed ahead on this at this point. We have the civil design agreement in place, so the project is actively in design. We also had a preliminary sidewalk with the landscape architect to start to eyeball where additional trees and plantings may be possible in the parking lot. This project includes as well some underground conduit work to prepare the city parking lot for potential future electric vehicle charging stations, as well as, we're going to be looking at lighting in the parking lot in general. There's, the lighting, especially now that the building has expanded, is not as even as it could be out there. May I put that? Or, I'm sorry, council member? Yeah?
With regard to the parking lot improvement, do you anticipate being able to wrap in the adjacent sidewalk work with an agreement with the shopping center owner and improve the area around the bus stop?
It's an open question. We have, that's one of the ancillary conversations that's happening there. We haven't received the best feedback from the adjacent property owner, but yes, we would like to, in particular, recess the bus stop, which is heavily used out here, to provide a little bit more sidewalk clearance. We are, at a minimum, going to be redoing the city's landscaping, but we obviously have an interest in seeing if we can continue that look down El Toro, rather than, unfortunately, where our property ends and where the property, the shopping center's property begins is not visually the most logical. So we'd rather not split the landscape design on that, that little slope that separates us from the sidewalk. But the long and short of it is, we don't have a commitment from the property owner yet, but it is a conversation we're having.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you mentioned, reading my notes here, with the parking lot, you mentioned something about tree replacement, tree, placement of trees. Now, would that, or will we be losing parking spaces, or would that impact the parking spaces?
We don't anticipate losing parking spaces. We are anticipating adding tree diamonds in the parking lot. So if you've got four spaces that meet, we would put one kind of diagonally in between there, so it would provide some shade within the parking lot, but we wouldn't, it wouldn't result in a net reduction of trees. And we're also not anticipating that any of the existing trees would need to come down as a result of that. So we're talking about a net gain of trees and no loss of parking.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And I should, on that project, we're probably two months out from the design being done, but there'll be a little bit of coordination that follows that with lighting and landscape design. So very likely, this project won't be in a position to bid until the next fiscal year, so we do anticipate this carrying over. But do think that the end result is going to be a much more user-friendly parking lot and certainly a huge visual improvement as well. The Ridge Route Drive drainage repair project. So this is the one we talked about last time, that there's this brick-and-mortar plug in the storm drain pipe without any real explanation or idea of why, or how, or when, or under what circumstance that made sense to someone. We're continuing our engineering assessment of the location. The good news is that we do think that there is a, an opportunity for us to install a natural detention improvement on that right-of-way, rather than just rebuilding the concrete and steel storm drain pipe. We're looking at potentially some sort of shallow detention basin located more towards the Molton side of Ridge Route in our existing right-of-way. We'd be able to maintain the sidewalk area there. It would really amount to like a re-landscaping type of improvement. The remaining question on that is whether the soil's going to be conducive to the level of infiltration necessary for the kind of maximum drainage event that we would model for. So we're going to be doing some infiltration testing on Ridge Route in a couple of different locations in the coming weeks. That involves some coring down into the ground. It'll be a several-day process. You'll see some, what looks like light construction activity over there, but it's really just to assess the ability of the soil to retain the amount of, or to absorb the amount of water that we would be detaining in those detention basins. If we were to do it, I do think there's an opportunity here to, aside from the fact that natural infiltration is superior to just discharging water to another location, I do think there's a real opportunity for us to use this project to beautify the Ridge Route sidewalk area. It would involve a pretty significant amount of re-landscaping, but we still think that this project is likely to be less expensive than just rebuilding a new storm drain. So lots of potential benefits here. We're probably, we're about, I think, two months away from having the engineering assessment, including the infiltration testing, done. And at that point, we'll be able to, I think, come before you and make a recommendation of, you know, do you want to pursue the more traditional storm drain project, or do you want to pursue the more infiltration natural treatment option? Unless, of course, the infiltration testing comes back and says the soil's not suitable for it, in which case we'll pivot back to the traditional storm drain improvement. But it would be, from our perspective, preferable to do something more natural in space that makes better use of our right-of-way. Did you have a comment? Yeah?
I always have a comment. First, where on Ridge Route is this particular storm drain?
It is west of the dog park. There's some cones and safety barricades in the general vicinity of it. So if you drive, you'll see it right before you hit the dog park.
Okay. And second, I'm, I'm certain that our, that our engineers who are doing the testing are cognizant of the fact that storm events may be greater in the future than what we have experienced so far.
Yeah, so there's-
As this Searick River is bearing down on us now.
There's a generally accepted practice for how they do infiltration testing. It includes guidance from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. There's a very specific process that they'll go through, and then there's an Orange County specific stormwater modeling tool that they use for it. So all signs point to us having a potentially interesting, different solution for this project. We just need to think good thoughts that the infiltration testing comes back and says the soil can actually do what we'd like it to do.
It's just that a hundred-year storm event doesn't mean the same thing now that it did 10 years ago.
The, the one good thing, the majority of the drainage area for this project is already pervious. So it's, the majority of what is captured is the golf course. There's a portion of the center at the corner of Ridge Route and Molton that drains to it, but the vast, vast majority is the grass areas within the golf course. So before the water even gets to this further low point, it has an opportunity to infiltrate in a pretty large field. But, and obviously, if there were development in the future, that development would have to address changes in drainage related to it. So it is better that this particular location does not capture a bunch of runoff from housing areas or streets or things that would be more likely to result in much more water planning towards it. The Phase Five City Hall project, this is the first-floor remodel project. So we, we have, we did the conceptual design last year. We know what we can fit downstairs. We did a little bit of work this month looking at a couple of things. One, now that the library's open, we've talked before that their only ability to operate after hours, after City Hall's hours, whether that's for a special event or just for, you know, Saturday hours or extended hours, would be with the accessibility of the restrooms in City Hall. We are looking at ways to allow that to happen where library staff would be able to supervise the restrooms, but entry into City Hall wouldn't be possible from that restroom vestibule. And so we're tinkering with the concept to make some of that possible, just to leave that opportunity open in the future. And then we're also looking at, one of the priorities that I have as far as the staff experience here at City Hall is connecting the first and second floors in a more unified fashion. Right now, staff that work on the first floor are really disconnected from staff that work on the second floor. So I'd like to create a stairwell access between the first and second floors, if we're going to do a broader remodel of the building that allows staff upstairs to walk straight into the downstairs and also doesn't require staff to leave the secured area to enter the public area, then back into the secured area via the elevator. So one of the things, before we embarked on a full design process for the first-floor remodel, that we wanted to do was plan for where a stairwell would go, such that we didn't find ourselves in a situation of doing the first floor, then moving to do something on the second floor, but having to tear up what we just did on the first floor. That's in nobody's best interest. So we've done some of that planning. We have a better sense of it right now. We're refining that concept a little bit. And then we're also looking at whether it makes sense to, instead of doing a traditional design project that then turns into competitive bidding and construction, whether this project lends itself towards a design-build approach, where we would hire a single contractor to oversee both the design and the construction of the project. There are some benefits to it, there's some drawbacks. I think in a perfect world, it potentially puts us in a situation of having the project move a little more smoothly and a little more efficiently, which I can tell you, when we're displaced from the first floor and offering most City Hall services out of this room, the sooner we can get the first floor back, the better. So I like the concept of the design-build approach for that. There are, you know, I have some suspicions or some questions about whether we would actually be able to find a design-build contractor for the scale of the project, because though it will feel significant to us, it's not really a large project in the broader government construction world. But we're looking at some of those. I anticipate that we'll have some discussion items for the council on this in the next couple of months. But we're, we're moving forward with it. Phase Four will be done before this, and the Phase Five project, I think, will yield good results, but it will be difficult to, to live through for some period of time, but well worth it in the end.
Some period of time, six months?
No, it's going to be longer than six months. I would suspect, yeah, so the, the challenge with Phase Five, at least as we're conceiving it right now, it is in one part, the first-floor remodel, which is largely a tenant improvement project. But if we're going to displace the first floor, it makes sense to us to do the structural reinforcement to allow for the potential expansion into the second-floor attic at the same time. And so that work is going to take some time. It's going to involve, most likely, new footers, it's going to involve new sheer walls. It's, it's not, for whatever reason, when they built this building, the second floor, the part that's built out right now, was built to accommodate a live office load. The attic space wasn't built to accommodate a live office load, it wasn't built to accommodate a storage load. It's just kind of space that exists in the building, but they apparently never intended to use it for anything. So it's possible to move into it and obviously represents the best opportunity to expand the building, given the parcel's limited footprint. There isn't a whole lot of expansion possibility into the parking lot. But we're sitting underneath the attic right now, and most staff, including Yoli, sit underneath it in the first floor. So the time to do it is with Phase Five, but it will add months to that process.
We'll need a room for your cot, too, won't we?
We're gonna, we're gonna be very cozy in this room for a while. We've done it before, right? We, we did it when we had to vacate the second floor, when we had some structural issues up there, and we obviously then also lived through not having in-building restrooms, so.
And there's all that storage space that's still empty up there, isn't there, that had problems with weight bearing and that?
Yeah, so the, the attic space is what would be reinforced, but it's, you know, unfortunately, because it's just not built like the rest of the building, it essentially means we're floating a new structure for that attic space inside this existing first floor. So it's a little bit more complicated than we would like it to be, but again, one of those, like, that's the biting the bullet moment. Once we get past that, we have really broad ability to use the building how we would like to.
Once you're into the reinforcement mode, have you considered reviving the concept of a green roof?
I don't think so, because that's even more reinforcement. So we're talking about reinforcing the second-floor attic for an office load. In terms of the kind of extent and involved nature of structural reinforcement, live load is comparatively pretty easy to get to. Storage load is harder to get to. Above all of that is green roof with soil and plantings and water and that, it's a whole different level of analysis. And at that point, we'd need to reinforce both the second floor and the rooftop portion of it. So it's, it's not, I think, something that is feasibly in the cards just based on likely cost. This is already going to be a costly project to undertake.
Would it be possible for solar on the roof?
Yeah. Solar, the building would, when the roof is popped up on that side, so right now we have that sloped tile roof, when the building is made flatter, you would pick up some additional roof space. You would lose a little bit of it with new HVAC units up there, but I think that you would have more of an ability to do it than you have right now. The benefit of this project, too, is when you pop the roof up, it gives us the opportunity to re-roof, which if, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do it anyway. And so it would be, I think, better to kind of consider that cost as part of this project, pop the roof off, and not, again, find ourselves in a position of re-roofing the sloped tile roof, only to then come back and move into the attic space and have to tear off a perfectly good roof. So I think this Phase Five project realistically is going to be pretty expensive, but it's going to, I think, take care of a lot of things that you would have to spend money on anyway. It's just going to be a little more upfront than we might like to otherwise, so. And then that gets us through the 12 projects on the current schedule. I wanted to walk you through just a couple of things as we start thinking about the modifications we're going to make later this year. We're recommending that we would probably include some money to do some additional analysis on that detention basin at Woods End, to document that we don't in fact need it, and to also look at ways to repurpose it, which would probably be reverting it back to a natural condition for management as part of the wilderness park. But as I mentioned, in October, there's some structures out there that we would need to deal with. There's a partially deteriorated concrete spillway. There's a couple of other concrete components of it that probably had to do with spillway purposes that are just kind of sitting out there. So we'd want to make sure that if we're going to abandon the detention basin, that we do it in a safe and logical manner, that we don't just walk away from it and let the earth take it back. ADA pedestrian accessibility improvement projects, we do these annually. One of the changes moving forward is that there's a methodology set forth in the housing element for us to prioritize ADA improvements in certain lower socioeconomic tracts of the city. I don't know realistically how much difference it's going to make on the outcome of the work that we recommend, but you'll start to see, as we update the CIP, some analysis wrapped around that housing element and methodology. We are also preparing, we actually have an updated pavement management plan for the next 10-year period, 2024 to 2034. next 10-year period, 2024 to 2034, that we plan to bring before the council, either in February or March, most likely. That plan would, if approved, result in some change to the sequencing of the annual pavement management plan projects, as happens every two years when we update the plan itself. In October, you approved participating in a grant application with the City of Laguna Hills related to some traffic improvements on El Toro, Alton. If OCTA awards that funding, we would need to include that in our capital, capital improvement program. That includes about 100 and, I think it's just under $110,000 in our share of the matching funds for the project. We should hear from OCTA in the spring whether that was funded or not. We do have high hopes for it. Senate Bill 475, which is the Senate bill that paved the way for the construct, potential construction of a fire station at the City Center Park property, requires us to do certain, to make certain improvements to the remaining City Center Park property and most notably to submit a plan for those improvements to the state by January 1st of 2025. The, or the Senate bill also includes a requirement that prior to submitting that plan, that we hold two community meetings to solicit input on what residents might wanna see in a reimagined City Center Park. So we will be getting into that in the next couple of months as well. So as far as, as far as the cost for those improvements, Senate Bill 475 requires a minimum of, off the top of my head, I think it's $212,000 in improvements to be made to the park. Realistically, $212,000 isn't gonna go very far towards making improvements, so there's likely to be some delta there. I think we'll get into talking about the financial implications when we get into talking about the lease agreement and other arrangements with the fire authority. Yeah, it, it's not my intention to have the city shell out any significant amount of money on these improvements. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is we are talking with the Sheriff's Department and others about installing automated license plate readers at some locations in the city. These are a significant tool for the Sheriff's Department, particularly in recovering stolen vehicles, you know, serving warrants, those sorts of things. Several surrounding cities have them. We're looking at what logical locations might look like in Laguna Woods and also looking at putting together a policy governing the operation of those license plate readers. There's already significant state law related to how those license plate readers can be operated, namely that they have to be operated by a law enforcement agency. So that would be the Sheriff's Department's responsibility, but there would be some capital expenditure if we pursue that related to the actual purchase and installation of those license plate readers. It's not related to speeding, although I suppose if you had a, you know, hit and run that was motivated by speeding, that then the car left the city, there's the ability to pull up license plate details based on who passed through there. So I don't think, it's not a speed camera, but I think that it, it certainly helps the Sheriff's Department close cases and locate vehicles, whether they're suspects in something or whether it's stolen property, that sort of thing. So we're looking at that. We're hoping to bring back a policy for your consideration in the next couple of months and then potentially rolling those out if the council's amenable to it thereafter. So all of these things would be included in some sort of broader update of the capital improvement program. There's no action required for you today. You're welcome to provide any feedback or ask any questions that you would like, but this was just an informational item for you. There's also an opportunity for public comments, if any.
Have you heard, had anything online in the public comments? No. Anyone here wish to comment from the public? Any final comments or questions from the council?
I have two. One of them is, I'm pleased to see the fact that we could create a sort of urban forest in our parking lot. That would be helpful for us and every time you cut down heat, that's a good thing. And the other one has to do with the catch basins. Are those catch basins part of the, of the law to filter? Would you explain that?
Yeah, so that, that's certainly something that's going to impact your capital improvement program in the future. There's statewide trash provisions that require a certain level of filtering and treatment in catch basins, storm drains, any, you know, confluence that leads to a body of water. We're still looking at how best to comply with that. We have a little bit of a strange situation in Laguna Woods where most of the catch basins and storm drain infrastructure in the city is private. In most cities, it's public, which creates, it's really easy then for cities to install equipment that satisfies that particular state requirement. It is more difficult here because our portion of the storm drain system and our city-owned catch basins are far fewer than what exists on, not just Laguna Woods Village, but in private shopping centers and so forth. We're also a little bit hampered by poor records. So when the community was built, storm drains seemed to have been added kind of ad hoc throughout the community. There does not exist a master storm drain map. We've done some mapping with the village's assistance over the last several years. So we do, for instance, know where catch basins are located, but catch basins can connect to any number of things once they're underground. And in some cases, we believe catch basins here actually connect to one another and then discharge into landscaped areas, as opposed to necessarily connecting and flowing downstream, which changes the nature of the compliance that's required. So there exists a, a provision in those state trash provisions that allows cities to prioritize improvements based on where trash is actually generated and visible or to exclude areas altogether if there is no trash problem in those areas. So what we're looking to do right now is go through a citywide inspection process to gauge like a baseline number of where we have problematic accumulations of trash, to the extent they exist. And then based on that, we may be able to prioritize what types of improvements we're looking at. But in a worst-case scenario where we have to comply citywide, it's, I mean, it's probably millions of dollars of improvements that are necessary. We're just trying to obviously refine that number to something less significant, but I, I won't, I don't wanna mislead anybody. I still think it's gonna be a significant expenditure, but it's probably a couple of years down the road still. But this initial kind of trash evaluation will really help with narrowing down the field.
I helped with the homeless count in one of the, a week ago today. And one of the things that I noticed in the areas where we found numbers of homeless and the numbers, I'm only, can only speak for our city and, and only one of the counts. And I saw that the count is actually up and I saw the same, probably a relationship of women to men, it's mainly, it's 90% men, 10% women perhaps. The men tended to be, what I saw, 30 to late 50s, early 60s. The women tended to be older. But in those areas, I saw lots and lots of cigarette butts. And one of them, there, there were people in, the two areas that we noticed, lots of people, were the parking lot of Home Depot, people sleeping in cars. Also, this, this shopping center, not in cars, but actually sleeping right next to us and, and people who probably have substance abuse problems and, and evidence of drug paraphernalia on the ground. But I also saw a lot of cigarette butts. And I saw, I mentioned to you the one area, it isn't ours, but it was a, it's private because it's right up near the orthopedic building. It's in the, what I would call the southeast corner of the parking lot. And wow, you couldn't believe the cigarette butts there. And I looked and I thought, oh my gosh, when it rains, all of those are gonna go right and there's a catch basin right in that corner. And I don't know what happens to what, that, where that goes, because we're already looking. I, I brought evidence of a, of cleanup in the channels when, after it rains, the stuff that we find in there, and it's really a problem up there. So I don't know what we do about that.
Yeah, whatever it's going to be is going to.
That would be private then, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's gonna be expensive, whatever it is, but we're, I think, our interest at the staff level is try to figure out where we get the biggest bang for our buck. There, there are gonna be areas in the city that don't have the same extent or maybe any trash problem as compared to other areas. And so there is some flexibility for us to be able to focus on areas of concern rather than casting the wide net citywide. That may help to both moderate the cost, but also, you know, make the solution a little more meaningful. So we're working on that as well.
Would that also, I was wondering if we could get it to incorporate besides, I mean, catching the trash is very important before the runoff, but is there any way to incorporate stormwater capture that we could clean and use for people to drink? That's so important, too.
To store it.
Yeah, it, the city just has such little property of its own that I, the scale is the problem. We looked at, we looked at some stormwater capture when we were looking at drainage improvements at the intersection of Sevilla and El Toro. But a combination of the high water table and the soil itself, even when we were looking at storing underground, it just wasn't feasible to do it. So I, I think the likelihood of stormwater recapture for drinking water use, that'd be an El Toro Water District thing, but we're, just as a city, we are a little bit limited in what we can do because we don't have extensive amounts of property.
So we couldn't do it in conjunction with El Toro water?
No, we could certainly do things in conjunction with El Toro, but I think they've got, you know, enough other things on their plate right now. I'm not sure it's something that they're necessarily pursuing.
Too bad. Thank you.
I think I would be echoed by, that I would be echoed by everyone here that was a very complete report. It was an encouraging report. It was one that indicates the value of our city manager. So we require regular physical exams and that sort of thing, okay?
I, I want to acknowledge that most of these projects are managed by April, who also did a terrific job on the City Hall Public Library project.
Yes, really.
But yes, I am the face for it at the moment.
All right, and we welcome back our city attorney.
Yes.
She has been through a lot.
I had a cough like that and it lasted a good, it wasn't all the time, but part of it, psychosomatic. If I think I can't cough, I have to cough. So I always have that issue, but, but my foot would suddenly get dry.
Yeah. Thank you for welcoming me back. I'm not contagious, according to the doctor, but they did warn me that with this virus, the cough tends to linger for about six weeks, so it's.
And the family got it, too. All right. We are now at the point of city council reports and comments. Let's start with the Coastal Green Bay Build Authority. Annie?
Thank you, Mayor Hatch. I did give a report last, at the last meeting. One thing I neglected to just announce is that we retain the current chair and vice chair, which is Reverend Fugerson, and I am vice chair. So other than that, no, nothing additional. Thank you.
I believe I've indicated to you that the fire chief, Chief Fennessy, had prostate surgery. It was cancerous. He has recovered. He's walking about now and will be back at work probably within the next 30 days. So it all worked out very well for him and he was inundated with well wishes. The, I don't have the date yet, but March, first part of March will be the open house. Did you get a?
Open house for what?
The Fire Authority building.
Oh, Fire Authority.
That's a, that's a must-go if you're a grandfather, grandmother, father, mother, or just are curious as to what, the repair of a giant truck, for example. You can, you go anywhere you wanna go and they give demonstrations and the kids love it. They put on a show that's unbeatable. I think you've been there before, have you?
I think the fire, if this is the training, no, I've never been there.
No, this is at the headquarters over in Irvine. So that will be my report. We meet next week with, one of the things coming up is where we're going to put the hand crews, their facility. It's either San Clemente or it's in Rancho Mission Viejo, down in Chris's area. And those two are buying for, they each have some land that the housing facilities, the training facilities, all of the trucks will be available for these hand crews that go out in preparation for the fire coming down. Very important issue. That's that. Now, the most fascinating report we're gonna get.
Well, we have several things. We, actually, we did meet last Wednesday, elected new officers. This is the Orange County Library Advisory Board is the board that works with the, our public library right next door. And a couple of things, while I've been sitting here, I bet you noticed too, the steady traffic of people in and out to the library. Library's getting lots of activity, which it had before and it's continuing. I'll end with the, you remember the issue with Irvine? Irvine wants to pull out of the Orange County Library and the, the issue of money. The county presented a, an offer, I guess you would say, to them and they were supposed to respond by the middle of January and they had not. So I don't know where that is and that might be interesting to see what happens. Pardon?
I'll try and find out at the Fire Authority. I sit near the.
Okay, well, they have not responded, so I think that might take a lot of negotiation. So we'll have to see how that works out. And of course, we had the opening of our own branch of the Orange County Public Library, which was very well done and very well attended. How many chairs did you set up, by the way?
There were about, I think there were 100 chairs out there, so we were.
How many?
100. So we were estimating that there were 150 people present.
Right, I would have thought that too. And it turned, I thought it was very nice, very well done and very well attended. So that's the library report.
Good. All right. Mosquito and vector control.
I'm gonna give the report at our next open meeting.
All right. The San Joaquin's transportation corridor.
Yeah, there's not, not anything that's happened since our last meeting, but I'm gonna pivot now back to the library and join Carol. It's been very gratifying to sit here and just see this steady stream of people walking in and out. It's not as many as one per minute, but it's a couple people every five minutes.
It's steady.
And it's really nice to see that facility being used right from the get-go.
We were all looking, Chris, but we still listened to what you had to say. I want you to know. All right. The watershed management.
We did not have a meeting.
All right. The community bridge builders have been busy. You had the poetry.
Is it what?
Community bridge builders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, that, actually, we got comments that that was the best meeting they'd ever had and we've gotten a landslide of comments and it seemed to really have touched a lot of people on a lot of levels, so we'll probably do some things like that in the future.
I think it's very good.
It's gonna be on TV 6 at some point.
Excuse me?
It was televised. I mean, it was.
And it will be televised. Excuse me?
Will it become, will it be shown again?
Yes, it will be. They're editing it right now.
Oh, great.
And then they'll show it four times, I believe.
Yeah, I've had.
When I get the link, I'll send it to you all.
Do it, will you? Yeah, I've heard some very lovely things about your poem.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from anyone? Let me just comment on one thing. The one thing I think we missed on the.
Bye.
I think we, thank you. I think we missed was, I don't have a picture anywhere of a group of people who did all of the work while everybody was in the meeting. They were in the kitchen, they were helping the caterers. And I thought it would be nice if we, are they all here? If we had them all down and we have one more picture. I don't think they were in any pictures with the council. Is that doable, our, your staff?
We have some city staff in the building today. We don't typically have everybody here, but if you wanted to take a picture with staff, we could bring down whoever's here. we could bring down whoever's here.
All right, how many are here? Would anybody be interested in having a picture taken with the staff of the building here? Who did nothing. All right, well, let's call them down and we'll...
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that after the meeting adjourns.
You can go ahead and adjourn.
I will, yeah. We adjourn.
All right.
We are adjourned, Carol.
All right.
Okay, our next meeting will be...
February 21st?
2024 at 2 o'clock. Our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all.